I'm going to call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. And first, I'm going to ask that we read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of A. Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the A. Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall.
Thank you. May we have roll call?
Mr. Delibarca?
Here.
Mr. Ellis?
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Place?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Here.
And Mr. Casalano?
Here.
Can we all, please, stand for our flag sleeve?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everyone, for coming out, and welcome to our February work session meeting. Work session meetings are very important. They're the meetings where we take the time to report out the activities and recommendations of our committees, and then to consider the items that we're going to be voting on next week at our business meeting. Tonight, we're going to have a State of the Schools presentation by our superintendent. Looks so official. I think we should, we're probably going to have to stand or salute or something, very, very official, but we're going to turn this over to Dr. Gruccio and the State of the Schools.
What do I do? Okay, good afternoon. Evening, sorry. Good afternoon. Good evening. We're going to go through, eh, kind of an extensive presentation, but it's so important for budgetary reasons that you digest this information. It's provided on board docs so that you can see and follow as we go along, and then even go back and look as we proceed through this. What I want to remind you is, as you know, superintendent is to update you on district learning goals and what's going on in the district. And my, the practice that I took on is that every Sunday night, you receive an update on weekly information, and at every board meeting once a month, the public, as well as the board, is updated on the district progress towards the district learning goals. But I also feel it's important that mid-year, that State of the Schools, where we are right now, February 2020, is important enough, what kind of progress we made, what your current enrollment is, et cetera, and secter. And then, at the end of the year, I will do the same things as follows. So here we go. What makes a community great? And I think we have to sit back and look at A. Harbor Township and say, you know, what's great about our, our community? Why do people move here? Why do people live here? Why do people stay here? I mean, some people were born and raised here, and that's a great thing. And we surround ourselves with businesses and shopping and great restaurants. You know, we look to be family-oriented. Each year, the recreation program improves. There's outdoor activities for our community members. There's access to medical care, lots of that around us. Nightlife and entertainment is nearby, and low crime rate, and the pride, bringing residents together for the betterment of the area. And that's what makes a great community. But as an educator, I'm going to stand here and tell you what really makes a community great: schools, all right? And I can stand here very proud and say that we have the best schools in the state of New Jersey. I can stand here very proud and say, I wish my kids had the opportunities that students in A. Harbor Township have, because we offer a lot, from great teaching staff to the programs that we have for our students. It's beyond what most kids get. So let's be thankful and grateful for the things that we have, and they're our schools. So we provide great learning opportunities for our students. Schools are a social environment for our kids. We will work each and every day to engage parents in our students' education. And great schools are great for your property value, so if you think about that, your property value is higher than most because you have great schools. Educate children to become educated adults, and our educated children with this community pride will someday give back to A. Harbor Township, just like you folks are giving back to A. Harbor Township, sitting and serving as board members. This is what we're all about, about the kids, and our focus is on their success and their future each and every day. So a school day here works to improve our child, children's lives. We have a breakfast program, after-school programs. We have students six and a half hours a day and sometimes more. We provide them transportation. We provide them meals, guidance, exercise, education, music, shelter, and a focus on learning and good character. And that brings us to our mission statement, where we say we embrace, engage, and educate. So we're committed to take the collective responsibility for all. All students will learn, and every hand together, we work together to make sure that is happening. So it's very important that it's every child, every day. We work on building relationships. Tell the teachers the first week of school, I don't want to see pencils in hands until you know students' names and where they came from, and that you build that relationship with your students, you know what they're all about. You make those connections with your heart before we start exercising your mind. I shared this last year. It's a process of, it's a framework that we follow, and it's how we get to our budget. And we all have a vision. We have a district vision. We have a district mission, we know that. We have a strategic plan that we're on year two of, two out of three years. Next year's the third year. We'll be looking to develop another strategic plan. We have an organizational structure that my team follows and enforces through the educational system, and we have an accountability system that we evaluate ourselves. So through that evaluation process, I'll share. So quickly, our vision is to be that premier school district where all students experience success. Here's our mission statement. I went through that. We surely know that where it is. It's definitely visible, and it's being used. Our strategic plan, you can find it on the website under Superintendent's Corner. Use that link, but know that that strategic plan, some of you were a part of it. It was a collaborative effort with the board, the administration, and the community to come up with the goals, school focus, that we were charged, the administration was charged to work on over the next few years. And when I click that link and I evaluate the progress of the strategic plan, we're getting through it pretty good. We've hit almost every item on that strategic plan. So the organizational structure in our school district is, number one, relationship building. But we focus on learning. We focus on collaboration, where teachers, administrators, through PLCs, are looking and working together at student performance, and then we're looking at those results. As we collaborate together in a professional learning community, we're looking at the results through data. And you, as a board, is receiving more and more data on student performance and district performance. And that's important, because that data that we receive in student performance leads us to that responsive intervention, that RTI intervention process, which Mr. Davis and Mr. Santilli will be sharing with you. We get to accountability. What do we do as transformational leaders? We look at our needs. So we self-diagnose all the time. We talk to the principals, and we say, are all the tools in place for the plan that we have? If not, what do you need? Who's learning? Who's not learning? Why aren't they learning? What do you need? So we ought to correct, because we want success. And there's challenges when we do that, but we need to meet the needs of the students. And then we self-renew. We consistently monitoring student progress, you know, even, even the needs of teachers through professional development, but that all comes through feedback, and it lends to the process of our plan. Through evaluation, you receive monthly, weekly, monthly, mid-year, end-of-the-year updates on the district learning goals, because we, as an administrative team, as a school district, are goal-driven, and I think you've seen that. I don't know if you've ever seen the district learning goals repeat themselves each and every year, but yet, by now, you know I'm a firm believer, we're not going to change them until we achieve them. And it takes time to achieve. We're a very, very large school district. So we're aligned to a strategic plan, and we assess, we self-reflect, we get feedback, we have discussions with not only our teachers, but all stakeholders. We take feedback from the public, we take, you take feedback from the public, share it with us, and we collaboratively refine and come up with a plan. Let's get into some data now. This is important for budgeting purposes. Our personnel, you could look at it clearly in terms of the line items, but overall, we have 1,363 employees here in the school district. Okay? We hired them, we evaluate them, and we meet their needs with professional development. Our current enrollment, it's broken down by schools, elementary, primary, all the way up to the high school, the Eagle Academy. Your district total was 7,303 students that come into our buildings each and every day. We're a little lower than last year's total of 7357, so minus 54 students. But it's EHT, every day, you have kids coming and going, okay? So those numbers may not be exact tomorrow. Enrollment, other enrollment factors, we have 25 choice children, 182 students at ACIT. It's three buses that leave our campus, high school campus in the morning to deliver students to ACIT. 131 charter school students, non-public 29 students, and 97 out-of-district students. So budgetarily, we are responsible for 7,767 students. Okay? Class of '29, 2019, very, very proud of 589 graduates, and as you can see, this is the areas that they have pursued. Fifty-eight of the percent of those students went to four-year college. Demographics. The, these slides, in order for us to have, to compare oranges to oranges, the latest and newest demographics for the county of Atlantic is fall of 2018. So the population there is 42,000 plus change, and that's a demographic. So we took our district population in the fall of 2018 and compared that. I will tell you, if I go in my file that I keep on my desk, in terms of demographics and enrollment, we're not far off. There's not much change in those numbers, all right? And I'd be glad to share the new percentages with you, but this is very, very close to where we are now. Okay? I don't know if you can see the colors there, but if you have it up on your screen, you can. District services, total number of students in the areas from remedial to Title I, special education, free and reduced lunch, there's the numbers, there are the percentages based on that 7,000-plus students that we have currently in the district. We went through these numbers in this data yesterday and made sure they were accurate for you to use. Curriculum instruction, what we provide overall this year is we're aligned to, and we test through the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, UBD Framework, curriculum instruction, professional learning communities occur, and differentiation occurs in our classrooms. These are the areas, content areas, in which our students are provided education in these areas. Other learning opportunities, we offer AP courses, advanced-level courses, dual credit. You have the PSAT and SAT opportunities to prepare and take the test. Gifted and Talented Program, the Celebrated Math, and the academies of Academy of Law Business, the Medical Science Academy, the Com Academy. We have Academy for Education, and we're looking to have an Academy for Aviation, and final performance. Special education, broken down in classified students. We have a total, a district enrollment of 14.8%. We are below the state average of 18%, but I want you to know that is an increase from last year. Out-of-district placements, and our super seniors are included in that data for you. Athletics and activities, very proud to offer 30 high school sports and 38 activities, where almost, come on, 15, on the average, 1,500, 1,500 students are involved in after-school activities, as well as our 22 sports and 24 activities for middle school, two middle school students. Transportation, some fun facts here. 68 square miles, the town of A. Harbor Township. Every day, 400 miles are traveled to get our kids to and from school. 400 miles. That's, and the buses, those yellow machines are on the road, and they just go, and they do their thing. Thousand, just keep that in mind. I thought that was a fun fact. A thousand tires are on the road every day. 97 buses to our daily runs. There's 481 bus routes per day. 110 drivers, aides and substitutes are on those buses. In our office, back on campus, there's six office staff and 10 bus garage employees. Forty-eight out-of our district runs are done, are served by outside vendors, where we're going to Atlantic County Special Services School District, to Coastal, DC, P&amp;P placements, et cetera. 62 district vehicles are on our campus, on and off of our campus, besides our buses. And there's over 1,000 field and sport trips that we run and cover a year, and that's after-school activity with the buses. And the cost for fuel, so you know, is 425,000 plus per year, and that's about $2.10 a gallon. And they're the miles we travel per year, over a million miles. Food services, we serve eight schools, 76 employees, 5,913 lunches served per day. There's the prices. Free and reduced rate is 42%. That is down 2% from last year. And this year, we're looking at new hardware and software updates and moving to a cloud-based program for this spring. And what that will do is, through NutriKids, it'll email parents the status of their students and give them program updates. Facilities, three supervisors, two secretaries. We have 79 custodians, nine maintenance folks, and direct seven grounds. They cover clean and maintain 10 schools and five ancillary buildings. That's over 1 million square feet of schools to take care of and clean. I can't take care of my house. I appreciate the work that they do, because when you walk into our schools, they're nice, clean, shiny, and we're very proud of the way they look. We have 7,835 is the total number of work orders addressed up to this point this year. About, over half of them are submitted by staff. Other work orders are preventive maintenance. And use of facilities requests that were worked by our staff alone is 4,433. We're very fortunate to have in-house experts in the areas of electricity, plumbing, and Security, three, class three officers, five armed guards, 14 unarmed. This hasn't changed much from last year, but we've expanded. We've improved cameras. We're improving our new lobby design to be more secure. Our Director of Security is working with improving radios and the vetting protocol. So while we are, may have the same things in place, we are improving. District learning goals, just so I just remind you of, the first one is improving student achievement, and these are the areas that I'll take you through. Literacy for all, social-emotional learning, and street. The areas of literacy for all, Ms. Moss was here. She explained what we were doing in ELA, but what's important is the data collection that we're doing on student achievement and student progress, and we are able to share that out now. It's important to see where they are, so we know where to meet their needs. Everything is data-driven instruction, and teachers will take the data that they glean and be able to make those adjustments in their presentations and their lessons. We get information from our New Jersey Standards, the state testing, we get SGO information, INRS data, and RTI data. Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis is quickly going to explain the RTI process. He has been working over the last couple of years to revamp that concept, and it's taken root.
Yes. So we've done a lot of work in the district to look at the alignment from a curricular perspective. Sorry, I apologize, perspective. So in that, we have focused on the classroom instruction, Tier One, and helped the teachers with supporting them, providing them additional PD, and looking at our curricular alignment. The responsive intervention program or concept philosophy is really looking at three tiers. Tier One is at core instruction. The goal is 80% of your population should be at Tier One instruction, which means everything's going well. Tier Two is that population is usually about 10 to 15% of students use a fall image traditionally, and they need some type of support. We give them that support in the classroom, and we either expedite it, or they just continue needing some type of support, and that's okay. Then we have the most intensive tier, students, that's usually the 5 to 10% of the population, and those students, we're providing intensive programming on a regular basis, a program change, to make determinations on whether or not we need to refer them to special education for evaluation purposes. According to our overall data, you saw a data picture last year, which showed that we had a lot of work to do. The data picture this year shows that we are moving in the right direction. We still have a lot of work to do. However, I do want to note that we're at least moving in the right direction, not backwards. So we're seeing a lot of positive effects of what we're doing to sustain the professional development in the classroom, which is a huge topic from the Professional Development Committee. How do we sustain that professional development, ensure the teachers are equipped with those tools, and providing those services in the classroom? This data picture is our overall autism and panel reading level data for the district in grades K to 8. When we did this analysis, this analysis was from the end of last school year to the data point collected in November of this school year. So keep in mind, this also showed we had 693 students with one data point, meaning we had 693 new students. We had a lot of students leave, so this information is comparative information for a student that was here at the end of school, and then was here in November when we did that data snapshot. The data snapshot is just that, it's that moment of time, and we use this just as a meter, just to kind of gauge us of what's working, what's not working. So as you can see, this is broken down to show you that we have students that are one grade level behind, and approximately about 250 of those students, and two grade level behind of the grade level, and that's about 77. So we're working very hard and very quick on addressing this. This does not include the special ed population that would be in our MD as well as our autism program. We're working with a different type of reading program with them, so to have them go through a stress level experience over a reading level, we didn't want to do. So we have eliminated them from this data picture, but we have a different program that we're working on with them. This is our linked test data, and this is showing you progress from the Form A, which is the fall, and Form B, which is our winter. And this kind of shows you where the grade levels and grades two through eight are going. This is a predictive assessment. So when students take the assessment, they are seeing the content for that grade level for the entire school year, all the way in September. The idea behind this is to give us a measure and understanding of students' fall, so that we can take that information and we could utilize it before we start teaching. And we can start to understand, what do we have to really pay attention to from a deep level of instruction from a curricular lens to provide the students that type of support? When we are going through that in the fall, that also is giving us predictive score. If students took PARC today, or I apologize, NJSLA, if they took that assessment today, then this is most likely where they would fall within a range for that assessment. So it's very helpful for us as we're starting to learn, how do we use this data in the classroom? How do we take this and work with the students so the students understand it? And we're starting to see progress in certain grade levels. Certain grade levels are still battling the students and trying to help them understand the purpose behind why we do it, but this is part of our universal benchmark process and responsive intervention to really help us be able to target what we need.
Oh, I don't want to interrupt you, but I see grade one.
So in kindergarten and first grade, we use, we don't use this assessment. The reason being is, they only have this particular benchmark down to grade two. Developmentally, in kindergarten and first, it wouldn't be appropriate. And when we are, when we're looking at grade two, what we're doing is looking at more so, how are they performing on this platform? What do we have to help equip them from a technology standpoint, so that the barriers of technology are removed, and that becomes secondary focus? Because most of the times when I speak to a student, the first thing they say is, "I have no idea how to use the mouse, and I don't know how to scroll, and I..." It's all platform-based. They don't talk to me about a question. They never tell me anything about how they wrote it. It's always platform-based. So if we start to focus on second grade to understand what those barriers are, and we become secondary focused on that, then the students can worry about the actual test questions and tell me what they do and don't understand with the test questions, so we can help them better. There's no better way, besides for data, than to ask the students. What did you understand? What didn't you understand? So we know what's going on in their head to be able to help support them. So that's a, that's a huge thing. So when we look at the math, this is also all over the place as well, and we are digging deeper. So the building principals and the supervisors, they're being charged with looking at Form A versus Form B, and they have to analyze it and tell me, if you could summarize it in one or two big themes of what you noticed for a particular grade level, what would it be in each of those grades, and what do we have to do to help the teachers be able to correct that? Because we would like to see our, ultimately, we would like to see our skill be going upward, not necessarily down. Some of this could be because of the mid-year, of the fact of the content is a little bit difficult, and now they have more content, and they're going through that process. Hopefully, by the time we take it again, we will see a different picture.
So Santilli. So John, just explain the academic side of RTI. So RTI can be used with behavior as well. And as you know, in our, one of our goals, with a focus on social-emotional learning, social-emotional issues affect the learning. Social-emotional issues create outbursts of behaviors. So good, so not so good. We need to address that, so, because that's how we help students achieve. So we, this year, have done research on the behavioral side of RTI, and Mr. Santilli's going to give you the update on that.
So without rehashing everything Mr. Davis just talked about in regards to the RTI process and the pyramid, great job explaining that, by the way. Ultimately, this can be done on the behavioral side as well. This is year one for us diving into that work. So just like the academic side, they're now moving into year two. They built that platform. They grew those roots. We're going to do the same thing on the behavioral side. Some of the things, and I'll work actually backwards here, professional development. So far, we've had three meetings. They consisted of a variety of different folks that are involved in this process, some of the members of the INRS teams. It's inclusive of some administrators, student assistance counselors, anti-bullying specialists, all working together to develop what our mission and vision is going to be moving forward for RTI on the behavioral side. One of the things that we've begun to do is to get baseline data, of course, and of course, a lot of decisions have to be made based off the data that we are actually able to capture. And the nice thing is, is that we are able to capture a lot of data. And you can see here, we talk about Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three offenses. That's not in conjunction with the pyramid itself in Tier One, Two, and Three. That's in conjunction to what we built. So a Tier One offense would be a minimal offense, for instance, if a student is late for class, and they've gotten, you know, multiple offenses for that, and they've got a code of conduct with their home, things in which they might receive a lunch detention for. However, your Tier Three offense is going to be a serious offense. A student that may be having issues with a controlled dangerous substance, and may get a long-term suspension. So that would be categorized differently within how we capture the data. Additionally, other things that are going to be part of that are going to be attendance, for instance, truancy. Those are other things that we are capturing as well. When we take that data, one of the things we've done is we started to also disaggregate it, and you know you can, you could take it and you could piece it up differently. And I wanted to also point out the groups of students that we're focusing on, because I think that's also important, not just about gender and race, and of course, general education versus special education. A lot of those groups of students we would certainly want to focus on, but also really digging deeper and try and have an understanding about who are our students that may be having behavioral issues, that might be our McKinney-Vento students, students that might be homeless. Because we have to start having conversations more intentional about those types of behaviors that we're seeing, because let's face it, if we have a student, whether through the academic side or even the behavioral side, that's struggling in our schools, but we correlate that to the fact that they may be homeless, or they may be a student that who is under the care of DC, P&amp;P, we need to start really digging down, and then we start to have our why. Because some of the work that's being done on both ends isn't just, we know what the what is. They did something wrong in this case, and they get a consequence, but we have to dig deeper and have an understanding of the why. So a lot of the work that we're doing now within RTI behavioral side is also developing the plan for the future, developing what those interventions are going to be, and truly creating a guide for our INRS teams to be able to say, if these are the things that are happening, and this is a particular situation for a student, and we're able to determine that why, then we can come up with interventions to help remediate that. So that's a lot of the work that's happening.
That's definitely the embrace part of our mission. Professional development focus, Mr. Davis, you, from your chair.
So yeah, so ultimately, we have been providing more support with our autism and panel benchmarking system, just to ensure there's integrity. It's a continuum, so we're constantly evolving and helping to develop teachers, because they have to work and practice and develop that skill, and that's continued training. Our focus this year also has been on the writer's workshop in K to 8, to really help the teachers start help the teachers start to understand how to develop units of study and develop that craft of writing. And new this year, as you have heard, has been the focus on the math workshop model. Our big focus in our K to eight programming is looking at, how can we go into a mini lesson and evolve more into small group instruction? Because the value behind the small group instruction outweighs the whole group, and we're seeing lots of positive effect to that change. Of course, the responsive intervention, the core instruction, we have done a lot of work with our evidence-based reporting process and our instructional rubric in K to three of helping the teachers understand how to design those performance tasks at the level that they need to be at and be able to get the students to demonstrate their knowledge and understanding at a mastery level. We're seeing some great success, and there's pockets of it, of teachers who are at the forefront, moving forward, becoming very innovative with this process. And then we're also still helping and developing some other teachers understand the tool and moving through that process. Of course, data analysis, test design in the Linkit. The Learning Lab cohort is a big focus this year where we're helping them develop their understanding of the learning target concept in the classroom and ensuring students are able to articulate their understanding of knowledge and their gaps in knowledge, so that they can help receive the specific instruction they need, and as well as really looking at that equity component from all layers. From us starting to have conversations about AP to honors, to gifted and talented, even to, are we ensuring that every single child in our classroom has the tools to be successful? And because they have a support in place, does not mean anything. And really removing that label concept in our district and moving towards the whole, this is an EHT student. What does this student in particular need to be able to be successful in this program so that they can demonstrate? Because we have some high-level students who couldn't do AP coursework. They just might need one or two supports. It doesn't mean that they can't be successful. So if we gave them one or two supports, we could potentially open up the door for lots of additional students to be able to participate in that type of programming. But it's really relooking at how do we identify students and not be so holistically on the end of just an achievement score? Because there's other factors and other things that we can put in place to really help booster up our academic programming.
And the budget, you will see when the budget lines are released, is based on the data and based on the programs that we need and what we need moving forward, not only for our teachers, but our core students as well. Stream education, just a quick update. Classes and lessons and projects are based around STEAM. We had the Self Esteem Project that went on at Fernwood. We are continuing with coding, scratching, Raspberry Pi. The coding club has taken off at the middle schools and the high school, and we've been involved in many challenges. But there is work to do, as I want to see more integration through the K to twelve continuum. I'd like to see more attendance at parent workshops. We continue on building community partnerships with the FAA, Stockton ACCC, and the military. Our robotics engineering and 3D printing and the VR and AR, all those things will be expanded, and we are on a mission to integrate aviation education. Under the piece of social emotional learning, we are continuing our relationship building, but just this year, our Pursuing Public Health series has been released, and you can see that on our social media and our website. Mindfulness is installed in our schools, as well as restorative practices research. We've been trained in resiliency. We set two teams this August, and they were trained by Mike Knight in the county office. We have mentoring program going on for teachers and students. Our student assisting counselors are very, very busy every day. Professional development offerings for our teachers and students in social emotional learning and the county office presentation by Mike Knight was for all our staff. But we do have work to do, we will pursue, and some of you have mentioned to me, what about PBIS? Did we do this? We are pursuing that avenue. We are sustaining our Character Education Renaissance Program. We will continue with parent camps, online and offline, and in person, and there's one that's coming up just at the end of this month. Community partnerships with practitioners and speakers, and we'll continue with mindfulness and the mental health first aid training. So moving on to our goal number two, there's positive climate and culture is what we're always looking to have in our schools, and we're going to support that hashtag, EHT Pride. We kick off every year with our September event. We have restorative practices, cultural competencies being studied, as well as the culturally responsible pedagogy throughout the classroom. So I shared that in a board meeting in the past, what I, you know, briefed my administrators on, but now we'll work between February and June to become more educated on those areas. And then our professional development will be for the teachers next year, beginning in November. Social media storytelling, we're always trying to tell our story on social media. Johnson's Renaissance Program, American Education Week is celebrated, as well as Teacher of the Year, Educational Services Professional Year, and Character Education. And our schools have all kinds of fun nights for parents. Here's a slide that I'd like to share with you. I've shared with the administrators, and it's something to really ponder and think about, equality versus equity. And this is where we all have to wrap our heads around this and realize that fair isn't always equal, and what we need to do to address the needs of students to provide that equity. All right? So that's when John mentioned equity in a couple of slides before, equity is fairness. All right? So work to do in that area, we're still looking to reduce absenteeism, to celebrate more diversity, professional development in the cultural competency and pedagogy and leadership development. And I share with you, I'm working on transformational leadership concept with our administrators. Last goal, goal three, is expand that community pride. And we have our festival, town hall meetings. We had six of them this past fall, working with the community. We will be visiting community businesses. We have our national anthem project, food drives, and job fairs, and grants that we seek, and Sustainable New Jersey. We're very proud that all our schools received the bronze medal this year. But there is work to do in expanding partnerships, seeking more grants and funding opportunities, and you'll be seeing a development report now that we'll be sharing with the board to show you our updates on the grants that we are pursuing, the grants that we receive, and the different funding opportunities that are there for us. We'll be meeting with businesses, and we always invite the community in. So these are the changes that were made, and they were sustained. The branding, the social media presence. Just want to pause here, talk about our brand. That logo up there is something we're very proud of. Johnson's Company, we worked with a committee that Mr. Santilli facilitated and led on branding. We had 45 different eagles. We said, you know, let's collectively come up, speak with our stakeholders, and come up with an eagle that we can be proud of and a word mark of EHT. And then that banner, you know, is for our school district to use, whether it's band or field hockey, football, AP class, whatever that we want to put in there. But it pains me at this point that sometimes that logo is used without permission. And I do want the public to know that we are pursuing a trademark, but right now, we do have rights to that in terms of the common law. So I just ask that, you know, that right now, we're looking at emblem, that logo as being school related. Security force and initiatives, we are expanding our lobbies and making them more secure. The late opening was a success last year. We'll continue with that. Paperless report cards, our data tools of Linkit, Mobi Max, those items are going to be in the budget for sure. There'll be Ryan and Josie, the RTI models, you just heard, middle school electives, and Kids Club was changed to Talons. And that new name brings a new concept, a new philosophy, and that things are going well. Just want to touch on this a little bit, a little bit of history lesson, the impact of underfunding. Over the last 10 years, we have been underfunded drastically. And what, just if you're new to the district or you're new to hearing this information, that there has been a grand impact on the school district in terms of teaching positions that were eliminated over hundreds over the last few years. And we're still trying to catch up to meet student needs. Eliminating 100 physician has impact on programs, has impact on students, has impact on, even to everything down to, we had to cut a full relevant driver's education program. That was meaningful to parents. We had reductions in middle school teams. Grade level classes in the elementaries went from 10 to nine. Sixth grade sports were cut, remedial teachers were cut, date coaches, services for specials in the elementary, Spanish, for instance, and SROs were eliminated. We did implement pay-to-play to assist us, but we've been able to take that away. Community relationships were fragmented because of this, okay? So this is just the impact of the loss of funding. We are unfortunately on the rebound. We are still drastically underfunded, but thank goodness, the last couple of years, we've seen some aid. But again, we are underfunded. That just keeps us above water, and as our bills and inflation increases, you know, we still need more money to get to where we should be. Our strategic plan, as you all know, is in place, but that strategic plan, in order to be met, needs at least more resources, more programs, more opportunities for students, more technology, more partnerships. A piece of that strategic plan was full-day kindergarten. That was loud and clear. So we've done our research. We had six town hall meetings. We've done our research. I physically walked all the elementary buildings between Friday and Monday. It can fit. It fits. We can do it. Physically, it can happen, and there's even a little wiggle room. I had a seat to believe it, but I walked every classroom. So I can stand here with confidence, because I told them I'm not going to stay, I can't stand without, unless I see it. But we walked into classrooms, and it's there. So kudos to all the hard work that we've done to hear the feedback, plan and prepare, move, consolidate, and make it work. Facility upgrades, it was in the strategic plan, as well as redistricting. I'll just put facility upgrades on hold, but redistricting, that was a whole big conversation. That's a huge project to go through. And right now, we're looking, the recommendation from the committees was to look at the middle schools and see if you can get those middle schools on the same time. So in other words, right now, we have a sixth grade coming in later than the seventh and eighth. And we are researching that, and I can tell you, we're getting very close to be able to put sixth, seventh, and eighth grade on the same schedule. All right? Here we are, February 2020. I'm giving you the update, all that we've done from July 1, okay? This is the work that goes on in my office, or pushed out of my office. So here's the full-day kindergarten. We've extended registration to February 14. Please, if you know anyone interested, encourage them to register and let us know that they're interested, because that's going to help us budget. We need to, we know we have the room. We need now personnel. And it's so important to be able to know how many teachers we need. Do we need 10? Do we need 15? You know, that advertisement's going to be going out soon. That process has to happen as well. So it's going to help us narrow it down to needs, and that comes down to money. Okay? So it's so important that we get the word out. Please register. Last year, I stood here, right here, this time of the year, giving you the state of the schools. And that's why I included the last year, so you can compare from enrollment to these areas, the plans for facilities. And there was a section for plant on fields. And last year, I said that a drainage problem had, and I'll show it to you, had to be addressed and completed by spring of 2019, and that was done. We needed repairs for our track, and that was completed. We spent almost $10,000 to address two areas in the track, and they were so bad that the state wouldn't even hold their track meet on our track. Those strips have been completed. I talked about a new turf for the 2021 budget last year because we knew through the testing process and the condition of the turf that we would need to either put that in this budget or to seek alternate funding to address that, because it's becoming, but the situation needs to be addressed, as well as the track built into the budget for alternate funding. And then five to six fields, new fields were supposed to be for 2020. I Xed that out. We're going to push that ahead. I'm going to show you. This is our current turf and track facility. It's used by many entities. I'm sure I missed some, but we know that our sports teams are on there, as well as our band. Our community uses it, we use it for graduation, and we use it for pep rallies. I was, I worked at the high school in the 2000s where graduation was on grass, and you hoped and prayed that that grass wasn't a smock in the mid-June. And then it took days to prepare that field with lines and chairs and all that. And that's, graduation's just an example. In the fall, you had field hockey, football, and two soccer teams, and a band that participates, and phys ed that participates on that field. And the amount of manpower that it took to line that field, to line and fertilize that field was outrageous. So that's why we brought the turf to Acre Township, and it's a wonderful thing, and we got our 10 years out of it. But I'm going to point to this upper right area, right here. See the discoloration on the track? That's where the drainage problem came from, softball field over here, and it would come down this area, and it drained over the track. In this area, we did that drainage project, so we addressed the drainage. But in the meantime, this track, you can literally stand here and lift it up. There was patchwork done here and in this area, and not to mention the fading that's going on. So the track is suffering. Terms of the turf, you can see the discoloration. This area of the turf looks to have a little bit more use than this area of the turf, but this is the discoloration and the matting that's going on where the surface is becoming unsafe. So this has to be addressed, and we are working on that research to provide you information on how that can be addressed. This was an image that I showed you last year, where my hope was to expand the sport fields over into the D-Wing parking lot, but with the help of the community, allowing the community to be able to use these fields as well and to bring community rep onto this campus. So that is still a hopeful dream of ours. This right here is hot off the press. When we meet with the architect of record, we talked about, first of all, let's look at this high school. There's almost 2,500 students at this high school, close to 350 employees in there. This is a small college. This campus is a small college campus. And what's been going on is, and one of the reasons why we can't let the community use some of these fields is that there's been overlap. For instance, this field here was a field hockey field and a lacrosse field. The outfield is part of the softball field. The field hockey, like I said, field hockey and lacrosse share. Over here's practice football field. Bottom line, wear and tear on the facility and also drainage problems has lent a conversation with the architect. What can we do to address the issues and improve this campus? So this is a plan for new drainage in here, as well as more facilities. There's storage here, which the public has cried for in the past, right under the bleachers, a new track, a new turf, and over here is an expansion of the field house. If you're familiar with the campus, this JV, baseball field is over here right now, it's near the JV softball field. And what this plan would do is allow the sports to have their own fields so that we preserve the grass and then more people can use it. And we will be talking to you more about this as we move on, but like I said, hot off the press. Sean just met with the architects on Monday for even an update, but I was in this meeting two weeks ago, two months ago. Okay? Moving on to how we care for our students, we have before and after care, so that's our Talons numbers, if anybody wants to look at that data. Neighbors for Change is a project, is part of the strategic plan, and it's something that Ms. Anaya took on and to facilitate meetings. In the fall, we had those six town hall meetings, so we put a hold on this. This spring, this will resume with a couple of initiatives to pursue equitable school funding and grant opportunities and obtain different streams of alternate rep. And I want to thank you, Board of Education, for, first of all, listening to the presentation, but supporting our initiatives and believing in us and trusting in us that the research and work that we do is framed around those district learning goals and around that mission right there. Central Administration and the Business Office have, thank you for dealing with me. I'm pursuing the directives that, you know, that are handed out, actually, that are directed to you to research and provide work. Our building principals and supervisors and program directors in our community as well. Very proud of Acre Township schools, like I said, but I believe we're the best of the best. And if anybody has any questions, we're here to answer them, whether they're today or through email or a phone call, I am here. I know this was a lot, but we've done a lot in six months, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gucio, for a wonderful presentation, but the presentation is reflective of is reflective of the outstanding work that you and your team are doing for our district, taking the goals that have been set by the community and by the board and formulated and given to you to put into practice and to execute, and we're very thankful for that. We see a snapshot of where we are and a blueprint for where we're going and what we need to do, especially in this upcoming budget. So I'm going to see if any board members have questions or comments on what we heard in our state of the schools before we move ahead into our committee reports. Any board members? Mrs. Byrd.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, so I'll just ask them all, and then you guys can answer whatever you feel like. So as far as RTI is concerned, are there any specific benchmarks that students may hit that would automatically put them into Tier 3? For example, if they're a grade level behind or two grade levels behind? Is there anything that would push them into the IRNS process quicker? My second question, how much time is used for, or taken away from specials, particularly computers, so that we can do this Lincoln testing since we don't have one-to-one computer access for our students? Number three, do we have standard forms for teachers to draw upon in our Google Drive that would help them with data tracking or possible interventions to do for their students that are not necessarily Tier 1 moving into Tier 2 so that they can start that process before they have their IRNS meeting? And my last question is really more of a comment. As far as the new turf and new track projections, I would like to see the testing results from the last testing results that we took that we talked about at the last meeting and also the most current that was on the agenda. I know for me, from a taxpayer standpoint, with 63% of our funding coming from our local tax levy and with our ELA testing showing that 65% of our students from, I think, grades 1 through 6 in ELA are not meeting grade level standards and 83% in math are not meeting grade level standards from that assessments. And Fontis-Vanelle is very similar to that, 68% not a grade level. I will have a really, really hard time approving turf and fields when we're asking so much of our taxpayers and our test scores are not as high as we need them to be. I would much rather see the money go into academics and full day kindergarten.
Okay, so Mr. President, I'm going to ask the board, there were four questions that might be here another hour or so to answer. If I could kindly request, is that a full board? Is the board, you have to ask the board. Does the full board want those questions, answer form sent to them via email, extensive explanations? Or would you like me to just highlight the answers?
What is the pleasure of the board? Should we maybe hold off and allow Dr. Gruccio to get back in detail? Is that okay with you? Are you okay with that?
I think it'll be a more thorough answer for you. So we will get back to you via email tomorrow. We are going through the CUSAC process with the county office, and I can have these answers answered in an email to the full board. And then if you want, at the next board meeting, we can share the answers. Okay? Are you good?
Okay. Any other board members' comments or questions before we move to committee reports?
I just wanted to say that it was a lot of information. No, but that's, no, that's a good thing. I think that it was a lot of information, and it covered a lot of different categories that, as a school board, that were responsible for overseeing and voting on. And I just wanted to say that I feel as if, when I think of budgeting and putting money out, I think that there are a lot of great opportunities for all students in Acre Township, but I do, that is a concern for me, and as I looked at the report, was the, I think it was, I guess it was 14% of the students. I don't think it was K to 6. 14% of the students were at grade level.
Yeah, I think Ms. Byrd was commenting about that. So that's why I'm going to be able to give you a clarification and probably even more information more so than I have on that slide.
So, but I am, I do want to say that I'm very excited to see the fact that how with the RTI and Lincoln, I'm really excited about the fact that the teachers are having the opportunity and the tools to pull the data together and to really assess and to make sure that they're placing the students at the right instructional level and right activities. So I just, I'm very thankful to see us going in that direction and sticking with, yeah, sticking with, you know, a program, a tool, or resources that the teachers can actually get to the point where they can master how to utilize those resources to really, really provide the right supports for each student individually, so.
Any other board member? Mike?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the superintendent and the administration for the excellent presentation tonight. This will be my second budget, and it's a lot to digest, and I can see that everybody's worked very hard on it and has put a lot of thought into it, and we're looking forward to continuing with it. So thank you again.
Any other board members before we move ahead? Okay. With that, very good discussion, and again, it's a start, a start to our budget season and our budget discussion. Many things to consider, many decisions to be made. So now, let's move to finance and operations, and I will ask for our finance and operations committee report, please.
Good evening, everybody. I want to let the board know that all of our minutes are now included on our report, so if, after I discuss things, if there's anything you want to look back on, it will be in the, the minutes of our meeting are in the report. The first part of our meeting was going over our norms, and I do have one addition to that. Ms. Anaya, could you please add our confidentiality clause to that? We're missing that on our norms.
I can edit that for the norms, no problem.
Great, thank you. Our 6421, we discussed testing and the condition of the turf field in order to understand the scope of the replacement needed. And we also discussed the new software FX to replace school dude. It's better for scheduling of all the activities and facilities, the facility use. And then we also just had a discussion on the ordinary purchases that are, you know, through, that are in car all the time. We then discussed gifts and grants. We discussed the application of the 2019-2020 school year through an online approval process from staff to administration. EHT staff has made 171 community partners to date, ranging from guest speakers, internships for ALAB, and grants to our school. As of January 31st, we have applied for up to $85,000 in grants through various organizations. This was shared in response to the concern of community partnerships and soliciting grants where applicable, remaining a priority of our administration. Transportation, we had an update from Mr. Fip and Ms. Fisher. They are increasing their drivers and their sub-drivers and bus aids. Personnel, the personnel agenda reflects positions being created to reduce the number of runs by contracted vendors. We also have six 39-passenger buses funded by lease purchase and insurance claim funds as per our transportation transition plan, which was previously approved by the board. Food service, we had an update. Mr. Beck attended. State of New Jersey certification file uploaded of eligible free students for their lunch and breakfast program was actually last year's list of students. This caused 158 students to be categorized as free for the first half of the school year, who truly were, were not eligible. The state has provided a guidance, a timeline, and memos for us to send to those families that are impacted and to allow those families to reapply through March 20th. Mr. Beck predicts that that will bring the overall department free and reduced lunch status to 39% to 40% of the district's population. Right now, it's 44%, so it'll go down to approximately 40%. Implementation of new hardware and software. Hardware was installed, except for the high school, which will be done soon. The implementation of the software is scheduled to go live this spring. This will, is going live in the spring so that the staff at the different cafeterias can learn how to use it and be ready and really proficient in it before the new school year starts. Mr. Beck has also informed us he would like to increase in the minimum hours for benefits from 24 to 29 hours. In that case, last year, two vacancies were not filled, and the first half of this year was cumbersome for the remaining staff. An analysis was completed by Mr. Beck, and he is recommending increasing the existing staff by just an hour per day versus hiring additional staff. There is wiggle room in his department, and they're still working under the 24.5 hours cap that we have now. Overall, in the department, updating menus for increased diversity. They've had special days where they've had, you know, Mexican food or, you know, they're going to do more of that. So we did discuss that. Eagle participation, there's always been questions about eagle and how the food, how good the food is when it gets to eagle, and so far, everything has been stable. Current balances due from people not paying for their lunches is between $8,000 and $9,000. I asked Ms. Anaya to add that in there. Mr. Beck reported that the $3,000 received to date has already been applied, the gifting that we had of $3,000, has already been applied to balances of students who carry high balances year to year. Facility update, Mr. Brunetta attended the meeting. It was a good meeting. Underground storage tanks, this is an update for that, and the two middle schools need to be done with an estimated, we need to take out the old tanks that are underground, and we're going to install above ground, which will be better for the facility department. The estimated cost of that is $70,000 for both locations, what was originally proposed at $195,000, but the majority of the work will be done in-house for the cost savings. Fire alarm replacement, the bid is going out in April for the spring/summer installation, estimated about $500,000 to $600,000 for both locations, with a formal proposal to be presented to the board before February 18th action. Mr. Brunetta discussed the code requirements for replacing the system versus upgrading the system features, which will double the project cost. Maintenance management module changed for $8,000 savings. This will be on a 6421 for board approval and was selected by facilities, ITS, and the athletic directors. Now, our vestibule timeline, construction is beginning in March. Facilities Department to work in-house to create the front office area switch on Davenport and Slaybaugh, and the vestibules will be done by September 1st. And let's see. We did have interviews for our benefit analyst and safety specialist. There will be two candidates on the agenda to be approved next week and to start May 1st. And then there's a reminder for committee to review the calendar about our budget dates and any questions they may have during that time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Anaya, anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Castellano. Something that was added to the agenda after the committee meeting, Viking is a place where we use to house our crew boats, and we've had a contract with them for a very long time, and it's a five-year contract renewal process. The last contract, I know I'm in mid-contract, but I went back to them and I just asked if they could not increase 2% every year just because they know our budget can. And they did hold this year's 1920 cost for the next two years, so the amended contract is actually on this agenda for board approval. Just two points of clarification, the above storage tanks, the tanks we spoke about, not only being better for facilities, but it was also DEP has new requirements for underground storage tank testing. We had brought that to your attention last spring. This is to remedy that problem. The fire alarm bids, we're, it may not be this agenda. We thought it'd be closer to, I don't want to throw it on you at the last minute if I don't have the information by Friday. Basically, this school, as well as Fernwood School, the fire alarm panels and equipment are original to the building, and they were the cheapest one available, the lowest responsible at the time. They were antiquated when they were put in. They are still functioning, but the last repair we did at Fernwood, we had to dig into a closed-down casino to get the parts needed to repair it. So it is time to replace it. If the proposal comes through in time, we'll take action. If not, it has to wait till March.
Thank you. Any board members have questions or comments on finance? Tamika?
Just, I guess it's more of a question of, it's stated the vestibules will start in March. The construction of the vestibules will start in March?
So the elementary buildings were identified to be done between March and June on second shift. Specifically, those are mostly adding doors, switching access points, like where the swipe is. The lesser severe ones are at the elementary level.
Okay.
Outside of Davenport and Slaybaugh Elementary is where we're actually flipping the front office and the vestibule area. That's a little bit heavier.
Okay.
And those will be done, the switch will be done in-house, and then the vestibule process will be done after hours. Over the summer will be the middle schools and both high school locations, which are a little more complicated.
Okay. I was just wondering, because I said, ooh, vestibule is a big undertaking, and I know that our district is used to construction. So I, you know, at the high school, there was a lot of construction, and I was just wondering how we were going to get it done and was it going to, it's really in the front of the school, so it won't disrupt the classrooms as much.
Correct. And once we have an actual timeline, I'm sure Dr. Gruccio will share with the board which schools will be done first, and we may just attach the pictures again to remind you.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else on finance? Okay, let's go ahead with our curriculum committee report, please.
Okay, well, the board members that met for our curriculum committee meeting last week were Mr. Delabarka, Mr. Price, and myself. Also, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Davis was present. Our chair, Ms. Summer, was absent due to a family illness, so I'm doing the report this week for her. In our committee meeting, we discussed future summer camps being offered by coaches who would like to introduce athletics and build interest in those athletics amongst our younger township students. Between coaches volunteering their time and booster clubs riding fundraising support, our students are able to be exposed to new opportunities to further, or to further develop their skills. Thank you to all the teachers and booster clubs that help out with this. Athletics that are projected to have camps are field hockey, baseball, boys and girls basketball, girls soccer, and track and field. Administration fully supports any other coaches that can commit to offering a camp. However, it is completely understood that during the summer, our staff has other applications to fulfill sometime, so it's okay if they can't run a camp. On tonight's agenda is a request for the approval of a foreign exchange student from France to attend our high school next year. A host family NHD has been secured, should we approve this student. He wrote some things about himself in his application. He likes hanging out with his friends, traveling, computers, the latest technology, and running. So he's excited to try new things that are offered here in the United States and is looking forward to living here in Acre Township and attending our high school. Administration is recommending the approval of his application. The high school program of studies has been developed and includes all classes, tracks, and academy choices offered to the high school students. It's been printed, and administration is currently working in the planning stages for evolving our academy choices and shifting between both a cohort and non-cohort model for academies. By doing so, depending on academy requirements, students may be able to take courses in other academies that interest them. More info will be forthcoming. For the 2020-2020 school year, administration is recommending a balanced sequential evidence-based approach to literacy instruction that will better mirror our Lucy-Caukens framework that we use in grades 3 through 8. To accomplishment, accomplish this, they're recommending moving away from To accomplishment, accomplish this, they're recommending moving away from the Super Kids program in grades K through two and supporting the use of Fanta's and Penel. We've used Fanta's and Penel as a leveling tool in the district already, and by adding more Fanta's and Penel instructional tools, our students will build stronger foundational reading and writing skills. Teachers will have access to the Super Kids materials that are already in use. However, with the purchase of additional F and P resources, teachers will also have access to interactive read-alouts, more phonics, spelling, and word study tools, and more guided reading books. Administration suggests that having a more cohesive curriculum from kindergarten to eighth grade will benefit academic growth, because it will provide our staff with a common vocabulary when discussing student achievement and necessary interventions. These leveled literacy instructional resources will enhance our students' fluency and comprehension, vocabulary understanding, and analytical skills. Improvements in literacy will benefit all other academic areas. Finally, an application has been made for the Army to consider a junior R O T C program at our high school. This military-regulated program is designed to offer our students leadership experiences and motivate them to become better citizens. Junior R O T C combines classroom instruction with service to school and community, extracurricular and social activities, and the chance to take on leadership roles. We will up, the board will be updated as soon as we receive a response from the Army. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Davis, anything to add?
No.
Any comments or questions from board members?
I have one. I have a question in reference to, I just wanted to make sure I was correct here with what came to Super Kids. So they'll have access to the materials, and I know that was just kinda newly adopted, Super Kids, so we're keeping the program K to two, and we're just gonna, are we using F and P for testing and leveling the students?
So I can, so ultimately, we have, we have transitioned grades three through eight to use the F and P, which is our leveling system, as well as purchasing the materials for readers workshop, writers workshop, and also the F and P, Fanta's and Penel classroom materials, which also gives more resources for a balanced literacy program, which also includes word study. When the adoption and the idea of this process came about before I arrived, the idea was that eventually this would be an aligned system K to eight, because we really do want a system that covers all of those grade spans. While they adopted this, they pushed it out in the upper grades, and in the meantime, they were coming up with a solution to help the teachers for K to two. So Super Kids was the solution brought into the district to help the teachers to create an aligned curriculum to help them move in that direction. Now, since they're much more confident and comfortable with that process, we wanna be able to further enhance the actual literacy program that we have, so that we have a much more aligned program when we're dealing with the phonics and word study because of the pacing of Super Kids versus the phonics program and word study in Fanta's and Penel. That allows us to have a much more cohesive K to eight process and programming to move students along the continuum. We did not want to necessarily remove the material that they have access to, because there's a lot of wonderful resources that come with Super Kids, and teachers do like it. So if anything, it just makes sense to allow them to have access and enhance what they're doing from a curricular and resource perspective in the classroom, and then also help us align further the K to eight continuum.
So we're, so we, so we, Super Kids is, they have it, but they're not gonna be, they're not, that's not gonna be their main source. They're gonna be using the Fanta's and Penel reading series?
So we won't have a reading series. We are going through our district, we're using the curriculum. So the curriculum will guide us through that process, and it will be utilizing resources, mainly using the Fanta's and Penel resources, and the teachers can utilize the Super Kids program to supplement for anything, because there's gonna be times where there might be something from Super Kids that they felt was a better resource that they could utilize if so choose. We just didn't wanna necessarily pull it from them.
But it's getting phased out eventually.
Yes, the ultimate goal is for us to-
Super Kids, everyone to be on Fanta's and Penel.
Yes, that's gonna become the priority, but we just didn't wanna necessarily wipe it from the classrooms right away.
I was thinking, I know it was an expensive adoption, was it expensive?
Well, with this adoption, this is a purchase now, no consumables. Super Kids, we purchase consumables every year. So from a longevity standpoint, it creates our continuum and consistency from a K to eight perspective, because the two programs speak differently.
Yes, and K to two, I just know K to two is just so, it's just so different than the third grade, 'cause that's where you learn how to really take off and become readers. So I was just, I was just wondering, 'cause I, I know that's been a concern, like just sticking, like sticking with something.
I agree with you. My experience from word study, I'm very big on Orton-Gillham, Wilson, anything, foundations. Word study is extremely important, and we are moving K to eight into a world where the end result is extremely important. So if you look at our standards-based report card in K to three, it's all clustered base, because we wanna try to start to move away from isolation and start to understand, like all of these particular isolated skills are extremely important to achieve this strand. So we wanna, we wanna be able to focus on the phonics and the word study component, so that when they go to the reading and writing, it starts to make much more sense and move quicker along that spectrum.
You still wanna have two separate programs.
I'm sorry, what?
You don't wanna use two separate.
Correct.
So with, Super Kids is eventually gonna be phased out, but it'll still be available to teachers.
During the transition.
During the transition, but we're gonna do F and P, K, writers workshop, Lucy-Caukens, all the way, K, no, and K to eight.
Yes, so that there's alignment and consistency.
Mrs. Slough.
You answered half of my question.
Okay.
My other part is the consumables, you're cutting back on the consumables, which is workbooks and thinking about the budget. Are we gonna be using more copying paper and more ink and more charges with the copying machines?
So we've done a lot of work with purchasing the actual texts that students have access to. We have wonderful leveled libraries that are shared. The additional resources that come with a particular program from interactive read-alouts and shared reading texts would not require staff to have to do much printing or copying, because the students will have real books in their hands, which is extremely important when you're teaching the reading concept. I'm not a fan of reading A to Z, however, it's very useful at times, because sometimes you don't have access to a certain particular level of student needs, and that's appropriate for that situation. But we wanna try to have books in their hands, and this allows us to continue to ensure-
And it lends towards that cultural response of pedagogy.
Absolutely.
Because now the students can choose more relevant books, whether it's to their culture or to their interests. So there's more choice involved.
Well, when you talk about consumables here in your committee report, aren't they workbooks?
So anything that that program requires that we have to purchase annually, that would be consumable. So it could be a workbook, it could be anything related to that program to make that program successful. What I'm moving us to is a program that, once we purchase the material, the only time that we would be additionally purchasing something is if we wanna enhance the library or we don't feel that it's culturally responsive and we wanna be able to bring in additional books, or if we have to look at it from a cross-curricular perspective and bring in other content area books, so that the students have access. But ultimately, this is a one-time stop charge, not necessarily would that be a yearly cost. Right now, Super Kids is yearly, and we are purchasing those materials every year, because that's how the program is set up.
Well, I guess my concern is that, right now, I'm hearing that different schools have no copying paper, and when I hear this, it makes me think that the teachers will be running off their own packets or whatever the students.
There shouldn't be packets.
Okay.
I mean, ultimately, they'll have a book in front of them, so, I mean, I can't answer the question about the copy of paper or the printing and everything like that.
No, but that's, well, I'm just concerned about, you know, the consumables not being there, and the teachers wanting something to put in the kids' hands and making packets. I know what my kids brought home, and it was packets of things that they had run off that they wanted their students to have.
So with this process, it's much more about teaching them the reading and the hot books in their hands, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I just say one thing? I'm sorry, Ms. Burry. I just think that, maybe I'm off, not off subject, but just like what it means when kids that age are reading, and how I think that we're moving away from, we're not, we have paper and pencil, but you also have putting the book in their hand, reading, having a conversation, and having the books that they're reading make connections with their real life is really, I think, where we're heading to get kids really interested in reading. I was just telling Dr. Usher, if you have me read about sharks, forget it, I'm not gonna read the book. But if you ask me to read about clothes and fashion, I'll read it, maybe. You know, so I think that's, I feel like that's where we're going, where we're getting away from, you know, the copying, just, you know, worksheets. Some things are paper and pencil, but-
Right, no, you're right.
And if that's where we're headed as a district, and that's one of the reasons why I guess we're kind of phasing out Super Kids, which I'm not all that excited about, but I understand, think I understand where you're trying to align everyone with the same language from K to eight.
Yes. Our goal is to look at that phonics and word study. That's gonna help develop the foundation for the reading and the writing. With the students being able to have the very texts, they are able to develop their fluency through independent reading, and then when we're working with them with the text, it allows the students to be able to have much more of an option, because ultimately, sometimes we wind up navigating to a very small selection of texts, and like you said, it's not always interesting. So it allows the teacher to kind of guide as well, but then gives options for the teacher to work with the interests of the students, so that they can also select texts at their level. That would be more appropriate, because when you're working with the students in a small group, they all don't have to read the same text. You're teaching them a skill and helping them understand the process of reading, because we're all, our focus is about reading behaviors. It's not about a level, it's not about anything except for behaviors that they need to work on, and then we help them understand the text, about the text, above the text, and beyond the text, so that they can bring those personal insights and world connections into their viewpoints to help establish more meaning, so that when they get to the writing process, they can make more connections in that process and be much more analytical.
And Mr. Davis, I thank you, because that, when you look at our strategic plan, you just hit on the educate part, section of that strategic plan, where it speaks to the student agency and the student choice and the relevancy, and, but I just remind everybody, we are following that strategic plan and working diligently each and every day to try to meet the needs of the community and what we have on that paper and beyond.
Mrs. Burry.
I just wanted to add onto what Ms. Slough asked. With Fanta's and Penel, the materials we will be purchasing, from K to two perspective, while a teacher's working in a guided reading group and the other students are working more independently, will the materials offer some kind of manipulatives for those students to be working with in their word study, in their phonics study? Will the teacher have encoding and decoding materials at, with the program, or would they have to print off their own tools?
So some of that does come with the program, that's a great question, and our teachers have been doing a great job, and they have a lot built of their own. So the concept of literacy centers is not new in the district, they've been doing it for a while at this point. So when I walk in a classroom, nine out of ten times, it's been teacher-created. It's not coming from a program, it's not coming from a resource, it's not even coming from teachers speak teachers. It's legit their own mind of things that they're creating, that I'm like, I've never thought to do it like that, but that's awesome they've come up with. So it's a mix, but we try to provide them those supports as well, yeah.
Thank you. That was my follow-up question, that should say a new teacher who may not have daily five materials or, you know, have built up their center closet, will they have access to these things through, you know, their classroom budget? Or I just don't want someone who doesn't have all of these things to then have to spend all of their own funds to get them.
Correct. We can definitely look at that, and we can ensure that we help provide the support. I know the teachers do a lot of sharing as well, but that's something that we should always consider, because new teachers come in, and it's a lot when they have to learn everything. So we wanna make sure that we can help them as much as we can.
I wanted to say that I applaud the efforts to transition to a more cohesive plan from K through eight. I think that that helps with consistency with students, it helps with consistency with teachers, the teachers move grade levels, they understand the process, they don't have to learn a whole new set of rules. And additionally, I work with Super Kids in, you know, my daily, in kindergarten, and while I really do like the program, I see that it does have its limitations, and it, I'm excited to see what this new Fanta's and Penel brings, because there are gaps in Super Kids, and I think that for our community, those gaps are, need to be filled in a different way. So I applaud your research into this.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing none, any more comment, question on curriculum? Mrs. Sullivan.
I'm just wondering, I'm old school, anything with cursive coming back? Anytime soon or at all or ever?
The only update I can give you about anything related to handwriting is the fact that there's conversation on just bringing back the concept of teaching students actual time on handwriting. But that's not necessarily cursive.
Right.
Just us folks having instructional time on penmanship. Certain programs have those things built in. Right now, that hasn't necessarily been a hardcore focus, but teachers are spending time on it, because it's a, it is a fine motor skill, and it is very challenging sometimes to read their handwriting. So the state has discussed possibility of bringing that back as an expectation for schools to do, so we'll stay tuned.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna go ahead, I'm gonna ask Dr. Charlton if there's anything you'd like to highlight in personnel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, as you know, the Personnel Committee is comprised of all nine members of the board, and tonight in committee, we reviewed the June thirtieth position vacancies that are upcoming, and also, we discussed the timing and scheduling of various personnel agenda items in the spring sessions, at the spring meetings. And lastly, I just wanna thank the board for your support of the recruitment video, the applicant recruitment video, that's currently under production. I really think it's going to increase, you know, and engage our footprint on different educator network sites, regional colleges and universities, and getting the word out there that E H T is a wonderful place to live and to work. And hopefully, that will diversify our applicant pool and bring a greater talent, you know, to our applicant pool as well, which is the goal of any organization, to have only the best to choose from for our students. And I know we agreed that next week, we're going to actually film a little segment of it here real quick, and our cameraman Ian was very gracious in coming here early, so thank you, Ian, we appreciate it, and we'll see you next week.
Six P M.
Yep.
Six P M sharp, we'll be filming. Anything else, any board members, questions, comments on personnel? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move from personnel to our Policy Committee report, please.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I know it's been a long night, but stay up for this fabulous report. So our meeting took place on Tuesday, February fourth, at seven P M. Those that were in attendance were Mr. Santilli, Mr. Castellano, myself, Mrs. Bur, Mrs. Sullivan, and Mrs. Melville. On Tuesday, February the fourth, members of the Policy Committee met to discuss policy agenda items. I already read that part. The Policy Committee began the meeting by reviewing their current, our current policy, committee norms. The committee decided to maintain our current norms. The Policy Committee reviewed three policies, one board regulation, and one bylaw. Of those reviewed, two of the policies were revised, as well as the bylaw. The other policy- The other policy and board regulations were both new. The committee, the committee recommends to the board, the attendance policy fifty-two hundred, fif, five-two-zero-zero. Unpaid meal charges, outstanding food service charges, eight-five-five-zero, and board committee bylaws, zero-one-five-five, for a single reading on February 18th, 2020. The Policy Committee also, also reviewed the safety patrol policy. The Policy Committee also reviewed the safety patrol policy and board regulations for the safety patrol on number five-eight-six-zero. Both the policy and regulation are new and mandated and will require two readings. The Policy Committee recommends to the board for the first of two readings on February 18th, 2020. Finally, the committee began the review and discussion of policy ninety-nine-one-four-zero, Citizens Advisory Committee, at the request of a committee, committee member. Due to time, time constraints, the committee recommended tabling discussion on this policy into the, our next Policy Committee meeting. Outstanding issues and concerns, none, and possible topics to be discussed are going to be, again, policy nine-one-four-zero, which is our Citizens Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions from board members? Mrs. Slough.
Yes, um, in looking at the bylaw, uh, as far as committees being made up of, uh, four board members. If, if another board member wanted to sit in on that committee, how would it decide who would, uh, step out of the room? So there wouldn't be five in the room.
Well, at the meeting, at the committee meeting, we talked about that. And actually, Ms. Sullivan is our fourth, um, Policy Committee member. So, um, if we're given, I guess we just give notice and then someone could step out. We said we would be flexible.
I mean, the, the change is going to allow for a fourth rather than a third. The way our bylaw reads, um, the president must be a member of each of the committees. So there is no flexibility. Um, that's the way the bylaw reads technically. Now, through the years, we've really have not followed it, uh, precisely. Um, it's, it's varied. And what this change does is it allows more board members to participate on more committees. Um, it, it allows more participation rather than less. We can't have five board members on a committee, we can only have four. So, you know, this allows board members to be on more than one committee if, if they choose it. So we're allowing more participation. But if we want to have, you know, more than four board members participate, it becomes a full board issue. Committees are by nature limited to less than a quorum.
And we, well, this just came up in discussion, just the fact that, um, when people put in their requests for the committees, some people put in, you know, four people put in interest for a particular committee. And we only had three people put in interest for, um, I believe, the Policy Committee. So it just kind of worked out, I guess, that way, I don't know if Mr. Um, Castellano was trying to give people what they requested. So we wound up with most of the committees having four people and their policy happened to be a committee that only had three people.
Yes, in, in fact, uh, this year, I didn't have to make any hard choices. Everybody got exactly the committee that they chose.
And now we have Ms. Sullivan, I'm not going to make so.
May I just raise a point of interest from my point of view? I did last year, uh, attend as executive member of all the committees as president. And I thought that was very beneficial to me, uh, to be aware of all the information going on in the district and all the committee activities. I just, I really don't like the change at all. I think that's a great idea to have three members on every committee, that the president be a part of the meetings. And at times last, during the course of last year, when someone went to attend a meeting, I stepped out. So that the person could, could be at the meeting. And that happened a couple of times through the course of last year. I just think that it really gives the president an awareness of what's going on throughout the, the district from all the different administrative viewpoint. And I think that is very important to be more aware as a leader of the committees, of the, uh, board, as to what's going on in, in the committees. So I really have a little bit of a problem with, I think it's great that people want to participate, but you are participating. You have three people at every committee, there's nine of us, then the president gets to do an executive role where they can do, uh, and, and as a leadership role, it gives them more background in what's going on in the district.
And I guess just quickly before I go to Mrs. Summer, if, if that's what was happening, if you were stepping out, then technically that wasn't what the bylaw called for. So that's why we're going to update, you know, uh, that bylaw. But also, um, this policy change doesn't preclude from doing it the way, uh, that you actually would prefer to do it. A future president, the way it will read now is that a board com, committee can have up to four board members. So the next board president, he or she can choose to do it exactly the way you're saying and have three. The board president could sit on each if he or she wanted to. Or allow people to sit in if they wanted to, uh, on a, you know, uh, periodic basis. Or a point four. So it allows a maximum amount of flexibility for a few, future presidents to structure the committees.
Yeah, I really don't see that in the reading, the wording there, but.
Up to four.
The May covers that, you think?
May. And, and I'll go to, yeah, and I'll go to, uh, Mrs. Summer.
I, I was just going to say that I thought that we addressed this at the retreat, this issue, so why is it being talked about again?
We did, we did address it and, uh, this is just implementing what we had discussed.
Yeah, at the retreat, we, we asked the committee to discuss it.
Right.
So I'm just, would like a review of what that discussion was.
Anyone, anyone else, uh?
One, one last thought. So, and I understand what Mr. Del Parker was saying about the president, um, going to each of the committees. Because Mr. Del Parker did come to all the policy, um, meetings, I was looking for you at, at this one. But, so, is, I'm just going to ask, is there communication, like I say, the chair, the chairperson, chairwoman, chairman of the, each committee? I know the agenda items, the agenda goes out and that's available to everyone. And also, um, is there communication from the chairperson to the president? If he has, if, I, I'm thinking if, if Mr. Castellano calls me or has a question or concern about something that happened in policy or vice versa, that I could, you know, pick the phone up, have a conversation with him as well. I don't know if that's something that can happen with, you know, the, the chairperson or even committee members from.
Yes, absolutely. And I think another thing, uh, that is certainly allowed and, and, you know, encouraged. If, if someone knows they're going to miss a committee meeting, uh, you know, let your chair know. And the chair can contact the president, we can work at however we want. Or it, you could alternatively, uh, see if another board member wants to fill in for you. We've done that many times, there's nothing in the bylaw precludes if someone's not available and they would like, uh, to have someone sit in for them. Or, you know, for someone just to, uh, sit in for someone on a particular evening, nothing precludes.
Because the last two years, I don't, I, I remember maybe, I, I don't even think it was twice that we've had visitors, not visitors, excuse me, someone who wasn't on the, the committee, the policy committee, come to a meeting. I think maybe twice, if my memory serves.
We haven't on that committee, but, you know, in years past, um, if someone couldn't make a committee, uh, a lot of times, they would find their own replacement. That's a practice that had gone on for, for some years. They would call another board member, can you, you know, fill in for me, I have a conflict. And, you know, uh, so I guess what I'm saying is, the idea is allowing the maximum amount of flexibility. And each board president can implement things, uh, as they want to. And each board, you know, with input from the board, how the board wants to do it. You know, again, I, I feel really good that I was able to grant every single request, every requested spot. Everyone got every spot that they requested. Any other questions, comments, uh, on policy?
I have a comment on policy or maybe a question. Unpaid meals, when we go back to the unpaid meals, um, charges, um, how many students are actually in the arrears at this time? How much, what, could you give me a number?
As of my finance committee, it was creeping up on nine thousand, and that was after three thousand was applied from the grants this year. Nine thousand dollars, I'm sorry, yes, not people, nine thousand dollars.
Okay, so nine thousand dollars, but you might have to break down on people, okay.
I'm not, not with handwriting.
All right, okay.
Go ahead, Mrs. Burd.
Thank you. Um, I think, I, I could be wrong, but I recall from the policy meeting, seeing a figure at the end of last year's fiscal year. So June, the final number was like, of unpaid fees was in between four and five thousand.
It was just over four thousand, that's correct.
Right, so we're at nine right now, but that historically was the forty-two more accurate end of business year?
I did not pull history, I can pull the history to see where we usually end up. From the audit standpoint, it's after the second year is when it falls off to be uncollectible. I have to get the historic, but I know last year, end of year was about four thousand. Uh, a lot of things, we, we used to be forty-eight percent, we went down to forty-four, now it looks like we're going to be close to thirty-nine or forty. Those people on the cost may be, it may be higher income families. We never did a study to see who's actually not paying, um, economically, whether it's one way or another. But, um, there are ebbs and flows. Mr. Beck in our meeting said they just had pizza dipper day in January, and that is like ninety percent participation. And it could be that paid families, those kids saw it, they got excited, got lunch, and maybe the parents are sending a check this week. But I asked him for a snapshot before the meeting to have that data with him. Um, and that's what it was at the time of the meeting, so that could have been a reflection of just that January sale, and maybe it's just a fluke. But I'd have to get historic year to year.
Mrs. Slough.
Was Mr. Beck included in this policy, uh, in any of the discussion? Sorry, what, he wasn't even, because he wasn't consulted or anything? Well, because I was reading, um, that, the, if they, if they owe money on their lunch, then they, they can still get lunches. But are they, are they allowed to get the extras? Because I know I would send a check in for the whole week and my kids would use up in two or three days because they were getting the extras. So if you owe money, you shouldn't be getting the extras, you should just be getting the lunch. Is, I guess, is my, well, I'm asking if Mr. Beck was involved in the, the discussion.
A, a lunch, a school lunch, we say extras, I'm, I don't know, is that what you mean, snacks?
Ice cream, the, the.
Chips.
Chips, whatever else is extra other than the lunch, the à la carte stuff.
From what I'm saying, kids, if you order a lunch, you have your, it's like steak with wire, like juice, fruit, or all that good stuff. But, um, I don't know about the ice cream or chips and things of that nature. But if a child has money, you can't take their money and put it toward their lunch bill.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying if they owe.
If they buy a snack, they can.
If they, if they owe money and they got a lunch, they don't have the money, but we give them the lunch. They shouldn't be able to get the extras, they should just get the lunch.
If they have money, if they have a dollar with them or what have you, and they, I don't know if they, you can't take their, no one can say that you can't buy, do with your money or dollar.
Well, I, I know that there is a, um, a parental line where the cashier says, oh, you're not allowed to get snacks because, like I say, I had to put that restriction because the, the money was getting eaten on snacks instead of on lunches. So, and I know that there's that option that the cashier can see that when they're checking the, the student out. So if they see that the student owes money and is getting a free lunch, but they're buying snacks, I don't, I'm not quite sure that's, taxpayers picking up the tab for that.
I think this is where Mr. Beck needs to come in.
That's why I was saying.
Well. No, but I'm saying, he, he can give you the details, but a parent can make restrictions, but the cashier can't make those restrictions.
Go ahead, I'm going to let Mrs. Burd, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer.
Okay, so two things, um, as far as the lunch debt of a student, it's not the student's debt, it's the parent's debt. So the restriction being placed for a student not to get the snacks, while I, I agree, it's, you know, getting more when you owe money. But it's not the student owing the money, it's the parents. So we don't want to punish the student or shame the student by having someone, the lunch lady unintentionally, just trying, you know, to help. But to say to the student, well, you can't have that in front of the other students, that, that's embarrassing for kids. We have to let adults deal with the adult issues and let the kids be kids. And so that was why we were moving towards this. And as far as Mr. Beck not attending or not being invited to attend, we did pose lots of these questions and asked a lot of the financial impact questions prior to the meeting. Um, at the time of the meeting, we didn't have those answers. But we were told we were gonna, we were going to get them before this meeting.
And I'll just expand. What we did at the Policy Committee was to get ahead of legislation that we know is coming our way. And it's basically, uh, aimed at making sure that, uh, districts do not engage in any form of lunch shaming. Though our policy, as I stated, uh, a while ago, when I reported on the legislation, uh, is compassionate. We don't turn students away, they, they will be fed even if their, uh, bill is, uh, in arrears. But we do have something known as a basic lunch right now. And, uh, that's, uh, essentially punishing students for the failing of adults. And that's what we're looking to move away from, that's what districts are moving away from. And we know that we have legislation coming our way. By the, the existence of both that basic lunch and the things you're talking about, Mrs. Slough, is, uh, is considered and, and I believe is a form of lunch shaming. And what we're doing is we're making children, uh, pay for, uh, adult issues. What we need to do is take care of adult issues separately, uh, which involves, uh, being, uh, aggressive in being in touch with, with our parents and if they qualify for aid, making sure we get them the aid they need. And being more, uh, aggressive in collecting, uh, unpaid debt from parents. But not making students suffer from that by, by having, uh, lesser, lesser to eat or drink, uh, that's, that's visible to other students. We're trying to be compassionate to, to students, students come first.
I understand what you're saying as far as the student shaming. But there was a time when, and as our legislature, um, I think that we used to be able to not go into the, the debt where we used to have two, three hundred thousand dollars in debt. And if these parents are going to think that they can just not pay for the lunches, because that's pretty much where we're going here, is it, is it, are we going to be penalized because we have so much debt in our cafeteria funds?
No, we're, we're going to be more aggressive and we're going to take care of the adult issues with adults. And we're not going to make children suffer.
And I was going to say, when you read, if you look through and read the policy, it talks about the steps that the school is taking. There's, there's layers, there's multiple steps that were taken to reach out to those parents and even had it to where they would have to meet with, um, have face-to-face meetings, like, listen, you, we're not, we're not ignoring it, but we're, we're moving, like you said, the child out of the equation. You know, like the days of the cheese sandwich and the tuna fish sandwich, whatever you want to call it, the day of that, like, you know, no frills lunch kind of in front of everybody else is those days. Hopefully, probably passing, but, so there's a process in place in, within the policy to make sure that we're, like you said, being aggressive. But in a, like, hey, listen, is there something going on, can we help you, um, you have a debt here, so, um.
Go ahead.
In order, sorry, in order to give the. In order, sorry, in order to give the information, to make sure you have the information, I didn't know you had needed additional information. If you can just send an email to Dr. Grishel and copy me of what you still need to know before you take action next week. I didn't know there was anything outstanding. I know we answered several questions the day of the meeting. I'd like to see what else is needed so you guys can make a good decision or the best decision with the best information.
Mrs. Sullivan?
I know during the Policy Committee, there were also a couple of questions about, are the cafeteria workers going to address this, or, you know, is the board President, or is, you know, an administrative person? There's a lot of questions that are surrounding this still. I'm wondering if we can postpone this just one month. We can talk about it in finance. You can get the information you want. We can talk about it in finance with Tom. And then in policy, the same night, we can bring everything together and get the policy done.
I don't think we need to wait another month. I just don't.
I, yeah, I think the kids need to eat.
Well, the kids are already getting a full meal. That's already happening.
The basic meal.
Right. The meal that's the meal of the day.
Oh, no. No, that's not the case now. That's what we're changing.
I was assuming the cafeteria workers, and I believe they are giving them the regular meal of the day already.
No, that's not the case. Go ahead, Mrs. Byrd.
I believe that students get, say, for example, it's chicken nuggets. If a student has a debt, excuse me, if a parent has a debt, the student will get a cheese sandwich, cheese on white bread.
I realize.
So, not what everyone else has. So, it pretty much says, hey, we didn't pay our bill.
Well, I would also like clarification on that because I believe we talked about this before, and this was taken care of, they were going to get a regular meal.
No, we didn't take, we're taking care of it right now. What we talked about, we're implementing it right now.
You guys are both right. So, I just want to clarify. Here's how you're both right. If the student comes to the line and has chicken nuggets and has money, does not have the funds available from the parent, they are not sent back to get cheese sandwiched. They are processed through, and the cafeteria staff go ahead and reinforce this with the parents and may say, hey, little Johnny, don't forget, next time you have to get another kind of lunch, you know? But they are not, in some districts, they were throwing them away, they were doing other things.
Right.
So, that's what we addressed years ago. We don't do that. We confirmed we don't do that. But if they are aware, and the parent says to their kid, hey, listen, I can't pay for another month, or they, the kid knows the situation, or here's the lunch cafeteria worker, they may know next time they have to get that cheese sandwich and will come through with that cheese sandwich. So, you're both right in different ways.
So, this completes the process. This takes us away from the alternate meal. Okay.
I was just going to add, just recently, just so everybody's aware, a law was just passed at the end of January that puts about $4.5 million out of the State of New Jersey's general fund. I have no idea if that's going to be enough money or not. But what they're planning on doing with that money is, any student that we have in the district that currently gets reduced lunch, under free and reduced lunch, not the free, but the reduced, the State of New Jersey is supposed to pay the difference between the federal allocation for the reduced price and the total cost to the school district. So, that law doesn't go into effect for another 180 days because it was just passed. But I just wanted to make sure you know that is out there, and that did get signed at the end of January.
Thank you. All right. I think at this point, we're going to, our final segment is going to be public comment. If anyone has comments, you have up until three minutes on any topic. We do not discuss personnel and litigation. If you have a complex question, we may need to get back to you. So, anyone with questions, please give your name and address and step on up. Come on, come on up.
Hi, my name's Julia Hunter, 215 Windswept Drive at Carver Township. First, my comment is about the lunch policy that everyone was discussing. When my son started at school and I discovered that kids who couldn't afford lunch were getting tuna fish sandwiches, I was disgusted. It honestly infuriated me that we would feed children tuna fish sandwiches because I don't even want to sit next to someone eating a tuna fish sandwich. And to give a kid something that most children don't even eat is sad. So, I'm really happy to hear that there's going to be some progress and change in the policy. And I get the issue with the snacks and everything. But as a taxpayer, if it means that kids get fed, I'm not really concerned with the costs as long as the children are fed. My other comment was on the, and I can't think of the name of the reading program, the Super Kids. My son went to kindergarten at Creative Learning, and he had a great introduction to reading, and he loved reading. And when we got to first grade, he hated reading. He hated reading in second grade, and now he's in third grade, and he finally has options of books that he likes and more choices. When he was in first and second grade, I'd say, can you please give him something more challenging, something that is more age appropriate, something that has more than three words on a page? And they were told me there were no other options. They weren't really sure what he could get. And it made reading and those reading logs super challenging. It made it painful at night. And I hated that I took this kid who had a love of reading, and now he was hating it. And it took so much to build him back up to being someone who likes to read. And so, I'm really happy to hear that there's going to be some changes to that, hopefully. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. This was a long night for a work meeting, but very important, and a lot of very, very important issues were discussed. One last time, any board members or members of administration?
Mr. President, I have one thing that I'd like to comment on. I got an email, I guess we all did, I just wanted to remind everyone at the, tomorrow, there's going to be a Valentine's Day tea recital featuring the Miller Band at the Miller School. It's 9:30 in the morning. I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. It's coming up quickly. I won't be able to make it because I'm working in the mornings, but I just wanted to put that out there in case anybody was interested in going over and supporting Miller. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. President. Just a reminder that the Atlanta County School Boards Association Dinner is next Thursday, the 20th, at 6 o'clock, Atlanta County Country Club. I do not have a topic that was given to me yet, so I can't share that with all of you. But I would certainly like everyone to be there.
Thank you, Mr. Del Barca. Okay, seeing none. I'm going to look for, oh.
I have one topic that I just want to share, nip it in the bud. As you know, we monitor social media, and a concern was brought to us today about, since we're talking about the cafeteria, about the milk in the cafeteria being old, so old that it was from like 2005. That is not true. 2015, 2015 is a timestamp in military time. It is not the year. So, I just want to make sure that you, as a board, have that understanding because you may be approached in public and that you, we always say, we want the facts, right? And we'll be able to share facts. That's a fact. Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out.